A number of the items tonight are items that we've talked about earlier and asked to come back for this discussion. The first item is the item that we talked about, some of the water sewer utility station policy. And Charles has met with himself and Nolan, Lanny, Amy and Frank on a number of occasions. And Charles, you want to kind of go about, go through if you real quickly on what you have brought to the table tonight?
Thank you, Harold. How we count the water is try to retain every requirement I've listed there, Mr. Murphy. Anybody who's outside still have questions, right, so you have to sign the intersection contract. You need to add it. The difference is that if the line isn't straight in front of your house, all you have to do is tap on it. If you are a single-family house or residential duplex, then staff has authority to go ahead and give you the service. You still have to sign a OPEC law, the city attorney sign Baltimore, you need to complete the order. And apply a full of all requirements. And the staff will talk about, probably allow the services to proceed. And then bring paperwork to the council for decision, with the management.
Questions or comments?
You know, I had a question on the night, and I've talked a lot about it. I think this, you know, we're probably better about it than burn to propose an existing subsidy, you know, we're getting off on you. Now, when we got into this, from my understanding, the people were requesting because they were having water problems. Then, from the actual point of view, we had water terrorists right in front of our house. You know, the right thing to do is be like, have water. But we got a whole subsidy, if somebody comes in and proposes a subsidy, my thought was, you know, really it ought to come back to the council for that decision. You know, isolated situations where they're showing, you know, for the, you know, for the service, you know, I understand. But I, it disappears and leaves that on address.
You're good? Any other comments from council?
Charles, would you take this to council tomorrow?
Yeah, I'll do the group one.
So we use that to narrow? Thank you, Charles.
That being said, we have a utility request, Daniel, who's, you know, good one, good one, if you may, follow this maybe here.
Sure. Good evening, gentlemen. We have a request for water and sewer services at fourteen fifty-eight Pride Avenue. And what this is, you can't really see it very well, but there's a very small blue square up there at the corner of Melrose and Pride. And that's just under a mile outside the city limits. There's water sewer connections all around this property. And what happened was that building permit was issued on this property. The contractor, Mr. Chad Williams, is here present this evening. There's a space on the permit form that says, public water, public sewer. Mr. Williams thought that certainly was available because everyone around him was tapped on. So apparently, that permit application got turned in as such. So staff inspections thought, you know, this is good to go, it's got water, it's got sewer, for a regular customer like anyone else. What we found out later, when Mr. Williams wanted to get a tap of the property, it was determined that this was a vacant piece of property prior to constructing a house on it. The lot is just over nine thousand square feet. It's in a R nine zoned area. And again, it's just that little square right there. If you have any questions, I'm sure Mr. Williams will be happy to answer any questions.
I got it. Show us on the map there. Okay, gotcha.
And there, I'd add too, that we have the fact that you, we've put some procedures in place to make sure that it didn't take that block. If you go over to see this, now before doing building permit, it's pretty brutal. Okay.
Any questions, comments, Mr. Charles? Is that the water line in front of it? Is that the dog line?
Uh, the water line's not actually shown on this map, but it does follow Pride. As goes the silver line.
Point it out again, Dan, on the map.
Thank you, Nolan. I don't think you can see the curse on this ward, but it's right up there. It's very hard to see because it's such a small lot. But I wanted to include the city limits to show you where it was approximately to the house.
This, the question here is, it's not that, obviously, they need, need water and sewer. But the question here is not that you're having problems, that there was some mistake as far as understanding and getting into it, right?
Yes, sir, that would be correct. And Mr. Bates would know that we take measures to take care of that in the future, at least on the cap level.
And you get state water was around it.
Yes, uh, the houses surrounding are all tapped on in our existing customers today.
Any, any problems, any questions to council?
No questions.
Any? Put that on the agenda for tomorrow night, please.
And just to be clear, we do have signed intersection petitions and facilities agreement.
Okay. Thanks, Harold. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Third item, to recall, is the March fourth session, Lisa Wolf, presentation concerning special events policy and application process. We feel like we need to implement in terms of trying to control or have a good idea of handling on the various events that's going on on city property. A great example, this weekend, well, I'm sorry, upcoming, there's a function downtown, the city's involved with it. There's two more bike caves that day, we found that, which, uh, that's around town, that does put a, that come out fresh on police. And we believe that kind of taking this through a one-stop shopping area to get through one department, and that department will work with all the other departments. We can better handle these various events. So Lisa, if you want to...
Hopefully, you all had the time to review, and I know council members or you have wanted some extra time to go through it. But it's a thorough representation of the needs that are before us on a daily basis for events, not just our events. But the events I used for last month is with United Way and other organizations that are wanting to use streets downtown and facilities downtown. So were there any specific questions that...
I, I looked back through it, and I'd like to make a suggestion. And I'd like to, somewhere in this form, and it may be implicit, but I'd rather tell it out. I'd like the city to reserve a light to request additional information or documentation with respect to that case. Either prior to or after the permit approval. But I, I think, I think that would be good, because if something didn't come in, or you see something that you needed a little bit more. And I thought I'd say prior to or even after this approval, it may be something. I just wouldn't want the applicant to say, well, you know, I gave it all to you then, you know, you should have asked that stuff. I just throw that out as a suggestion. Uh, I think it'd be helpful from the staff perspective.
Sure.
I agree with that, Mr. Wolf, I think we have to play some...
We could come up with a terminology for that, I suppose. Were there any other comments or...
It doesn't, yeah, it doesn't take an effect on the surface of carnival comes over to church for eating. That comes in, police department.
Well, we, we work closely with the police department, but that's not...
Part of it.
That's, yeah, I think that's totally separate, isn't it?
Some part of it, yeah.
Most of this is about Dan, too.
Public space.
Well, that'd be public board space, public property, yeah.
Is that it?
Any other questions?
Finally, like you say, life and a good job, that is no long needed.
Yep.
I think it'd be a big help with the activity.
And as Harold said, it's going to come through me at first, and then we'll, depending on which departments are involved, you know, for whatever the event is. We'll probably have, you know, group meetings and make sure all bases are covered. Finances been added on to it to make sure the roof management side is covered, so.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay. At the last meeting, the fire services question came up as your call. Jay will review this, and Eric, above property has been acquired for Station Six. Utilities are in the midst of being run to that site. Actually, the contract's been led with consultant group or architect group to develop some plans. But these guys will go over kind of where we are, review the potential operations, and provide you some additional information that we've got since the last time that we've talked about this, which I believe was eighteen months ago, I'm unsure. Jay?
Yes. Eric's gonna, Eric's gonna start off in the beginning and talk about the station as far as working with architect and where we are with our land.
Harold pretty much nailed most of my slide points here. The, the property office has been purchased for Station Six. We have extended the sanitary sewer line to the station and actually installed a tap line for the property while we were out there, way in County Rock. It was decided between engineering, water resources, fire, and myself. It'd be smart just to go ahead and install the tap while we're there, because it's going to be about eighteen feet deep. It would save money in the long run. Architect, as you know, has been selected and they're on board. We've reviewed several conceptual floor plans. We've settled on a conceptual design. They're producing a detailed floor plan now. As they develop the floor plan, when they finish that, they'll do elevation drawings, so that we'll get the schematic design finished. We'll know what it looks like inside, what it looks like from the outside. And then we'll review that. And at that point, they can do a cost estimate based on what kind of materials for exterior, what kind of design for exterior we select, what kind of floor plan we end up with. So we'll have a cost estimate finished when that conceptual schematic design's completed. But it gives us a question of timing. We'll probably have the design complete based on what we're seeing right now with pace sometime early August. That means we can go out and bid at that point, and we'll put the contract out for bid. We'll receive bids back. It takes anywhere from six to eight weeks to go through that process. So sometime in September, we'll have the bids back. Usually takes a month to work through that, let you all review it, and then get it through the process of award. And then from the time of award until the time of construction completion, anywhere between ten and twelve months, depending on weather and things like that. So we're, in big picture terms, looking at occupying the new station sometime in November of fifteen. And I'll just say that I appreciate the effort that's gone into this project. We've done a lot of front-end work on this project. I've worked with IT to determine what we need for IT resources, what the station can offer IT in terms of backup locations. We've talked to engineering on the sewer line, water and sewer was precious enough to let us add a tap. I've worked with the fire guys quite a bit on the conceptual floor plans. So a lot of departments in the city have been involved in this project already so far, putting up some of these numbers and strategies. I think we're working pretty well together, and I would say thank you to those folks that helped us. With that brief overview, I'll be glad to entertain any questions you might have about the status of the project in sale.
Eric, why don't you just review the site, make sure everybody knows where the site's located.
Uh, it's off of Bonner Bridge. It's close to Highland Elementary. If you're going down Bonner Bridge towards the elementary school, it's on the left, kind of in a curve. It's not too far from Cox Toyota, by the way the curb flies.
You know, I had one citizen already called, it's a legitimate request. A large majority of them, probably ninety percent, say, yeah, you're going traffic coming out of that station, we can't get in the light. There are times that essentially, it seems like on Saturdays, that we do have some traffic blocked up going into the school to pick up kids. If you take a left, going back into McIntosh. Saturday traffic out there is really, really tough, still there is school traffic. They walk all the way back out on Bonner Bridge.
On Make-A-Home.
Huh?
On Make-A-Home.
Make-A-Home.
Oh, yeah, I heard, sorry, sorry.
Actually, way, way about that.
Very seldom have that.
But there's been some other days, Nolan, that we have some traffic out. I think we're trying to work with the principal, that's on, to try to get people off that road.
Well, you know, from the beginning of that school, they had two-way traffic coming in, two lines. But, or they cut it back to one?
Well, what I've seen...
There's still two. I'm, I'm sorry.
Still, there is two lines, but they've done better recently. At one point, they would walk down the line. So you'd end up with a single line, they were walking up the line to let people. Now they're letting the cars come through, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I got it. Well, it used to be they would move X amount forward, and then empty both lines. So you wouldn't have any problems with kids crossing the line, the main traffic.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's hit site.
Any other questions on that?
Thank you. And we, like Harold said, we, that question was posed to us in the situation where the station's located. The primary district will be back towards, back toward university. So we're, we're going to be hanging that right out probably ninety-five percent of the time. And if we do have to hang left, and there's a bunch of traffic, nothing can be worse than Church Street. We got two stations pulled out on Church Street now, so we'll, we'll make all that work. Okay, um, so we're really here talking about our resource planning. We've had several different presentations with you guys. We started back in, in Jan, in January of two thousand and ten, at a council retreat. So we talked about that, and then we had the study presentation after it was complete in June of two thousand and eleven. And then the Center for Public Safety Excellence came back again in August and did it, they did, you guys, a work session, and then they did it the, uh, at, on, at the city council meeting where it was taped. Uh, we had a meeting in March of twelve, we're talking about some of the communication issues that were brought out in the study. Then we got cleared up on some times that were presented in the study. And then in April of thirteen, we did an update on staffing. So we've, we've had several different presentations about this along the way. And, you know, we're just here to kind of review and go back over some of that. So currently, I'm going to see if I, don't mess this up right here. Currently, this is the map of the city, and so the different colors of the different station districts. And I'll just start in the east, that's Station Three. That's on Wilken Street, Grand Hook Hill Road. Uh, we have one engine company there, one truck with three guys as a minimum each day. Um, Station Two is down here on Webb Avenue. We have another truck there with the three-man crew, as all these are minimum staffings. And then headquarters station, two fifteen South Church Street. Uh, that's where the engine comp, the engine ladder truck, the battalion chief and the squad, which is like a, a utility truck that runs out of there. Um, Station Five on Industry Drive, have a three, a three-man crew there at that station. Station Four, we have the three-man crew, and then we have Squad Two, which is a two-man crew that primarily, they're running all the calls in Forest District. But primarily, they're there to catch the medical calls, to keep Engine Four available for anything in the west. Uh, this is the station, this is the location for Station Six. Uh, you have University Drive, you turn on the Bonner Bridge. This area here is the school area, so we're right, essentially right next to the school, right there. So that's the proposed location for Station Six. As you recall, when we had our other presentations, the Center for Public Safety Excellence came in, they did a study. Uh, the department worked with them, and we went through our operations. We talked about several different things. And at the last time that we talked with you guys, our recommendation was based on the Center for Public Safety Excellence recommendation, was that, that we staffed Station Six with an engine company, a ladder truck and a battalion chief. So that would be fifteen additional staff in total, five more people each day to staff all those vehicles. And then we will be moving six people from Station Four, where Squad Two's, and we moved six down. So that would give us twenty-one at this particular station, or seven people each day, because we have three shifts. So for the timeline for the completion of Station Six, you have the station construction and all that's involved. But then you go in, then we have to hire and train additional employees. We have to purchase a necessary fire truck. So we're talking about, that's almost a year, three hundred and twenty to forty days to, for construction of fire trucks. So that's a process out front that we have to work through. We have to revise and add procedures, because we have different pieces of apparatus, different staffing. And then we have to develop the new computer-based response districts for dispatch. So we have different trucks. Once that happens, different vehicles go to different calls than what they used to when they're getting on those edges, because the districts will be changed, like we showed you in the map. But as you can see, this plan, revising the procedures and the computer-based response, this is about the whole city. I mean, we're talking about Station Six and staffing the personnel for Station Six. But it affects the whole city, our fire service throughout the whole city. As far as people backing in, additional units coming in to help, and who's coming. When you pull a truck from one station, then essentially that district is, is left uncovered. So all of these things go into our planning and procedures. So it's a citywide process. Um, as far as the operational costs, we've talked about this before, but the operational cost will be fifteen additional employees. The employee equipment package, that's their, their turnout gear, the radio, all the equipment that they need, uniforms, everything that goes along with that. There'll be additional utility costs for the station, and then vehicle operating costs. When you put all that stuff together, the number that you're looking at as operational cost per year is a million dollars. That's, that's where you're at. You said a per year? Yes. That's, yes, sir, that's the operational cost, is a million a year for all those. But that covers, you know, everything on that, as far as the utility costs and all that. Yeah, but that's just talking about one station. That's correct.
Chief, how much is, obviously, you don't have to replace the turnout gear, you don't have to manufacture it every year.
No, we don't have that every year. That's, um, that's the startup cost. So it would be a little bit less than that, but you can have the startup cost of buying that. We still have to, those people will be, get in the system as far as replacing the gear, because the gear has to be replaced. So, so it is, the startup is a little bit more than the, than the perpetual cost each year. But as far as the, as far as the annual, it's about a million dollars when you think about all that, as far as their clothing each year, things, the things that they have. So that's the operational cost. The next thing that we have is the capital cost. So for this particular station, we have to buy two engines, it'll be two large apparatus, and then one full-size passenger vehicle. That's the vehicle that the battalion chief will be riding in each day, which is essentially a pickup truck with a camper shell on the back. So he'll have all the equipment that he would carry for his particular job. And the capital cost for that is, would be one point four million for all of those. And so that doesn't include the station. So the station's out there, the capital startup cost, and then the operational cost. Okay, so we're talking about having these people and what they're going to do, and the engine, and the ladder, and the battalion chief. So that's what we're talking about. So this is what the, each one of those people or, or apparatus and stuff functions will do. So the standard fire engine company needs assessment, that's the standard fire truck that you're thinking about. The development size and the general area in the proximity of Station Six site, as it relates to other areas of the city that we already have an ordinary engine company based at the fire station. So it's another area of the city requiring an engine company, just comparable to the rest of the city. Uh, the response time factors pertain to searching, safely removing trapped occupants and structured fire before they succumb to the exposure of fire products. The response time factor in relation to the ability for quickly flowing water on fires before it grows beyond the department's capabilities to extinguish it, before the total destruction. So, and then the response time factor relates to providing patient care rapidly during emergency medical situations to increase and the chance for successful recovery. So we're talking about getting there, safely removing people, safety for our personnel, quickly flowing water into the fire, and then response time for emergency medical costs. Also, our goal's consistent with the National Fire Protection Association of having a standard engine company arrive on scene within four minutes or less after responding from their station ninety percent of the time. So that's the goal that we're shooting for, because time is distant. Distance, distance is time. So the farther you're going to have to go, the more your response time is. So that's why that station is needed out there, because of the larger response time from the other units trying to cover into that area now. The impact of this type of resource affects our national, our North Carolina Response Rating Schedule, or another term is the ISO. Uh, and also the distribution of this type company affects the department's ability to comply with Department Labor Regulations pertaining to emergency operations, which is two in and two out. As far as our safety, when we have staff going in at a working fire, we have to have two people on the outside as a safety factor. For those people that are working inside, in case there was an emergency, they have to be in, be able to go in and get them out. And then this trucking crew will be part of an effective response force deployed for structured fires and larger incidents. So it's part of a group of people to put the fire out. So it's, it's one of the components of that. The ladder truck, the distance and the general proximity to Station Six site is well beyond the capabilities that the larger ladder truck operating in Headquarters Fire Station as it pertains to an adequate response time. Again, response time, the ladder truck going out that far to do the job of the ladder truck. Also, there are sixty-seven buildings that are classified by the North Carolina Response Rating Schedule, or ISO, as needing a ladder truck and crew in this area of the city to reach upper levels of a structure and to flow large amounts of water for a fire, for fire extinguishment from an elevated position. Essentially, the little, the, the first benchmark for ISO saying that you need a ladder truck is five buildings. It's, it talks about height, and then a thirty-five hundred gallon per minute fire flow. Those are the reasons that you would need that. And currently, just in the area that this truck would cover, it's not talking about the whole city. Just where this truck will cover, we have sixty-seven buildings that, that fall into that category right now. Uh, the larger size ladder truck carries supplemental equipment designed for rescue operations associated with safely extracting patients from motor vehicle accidents. So we have, uh, we have specialized rescue equipment on that truck as well. And then the ladder truck crew will be an additional part of the effective response force deployed to structure fires in larger incidents. That's, they're another factor of people coming to take care of the event. And then also, the ladder truck is part of our goal of the National Fire Protection Association of having a total effective response force, that's the group of people, on scene within eight minutes or less after responding from their station ninety percent of the time. So that ladder truck is part of that total group that should be there, our goal of, of eight minutes or less. And there's no way that they can make that now, working on the operation that we have ninety percent of the time. Okay, so we talked about the engine, we talked about the ladder truck, and now we're to the battalion chief. So the battalion chief, the responsibilities or what they would be doing is the distance and general proxen, uh, general area in the proximity of Fire Station Six is well beyond the capabilities of the current battalion chief operating from Headquarters Station as it pertains to response time. So you've got this one battalion chief that we have each day, and they're responding from Headquarters Fire Station to all the multi-company operations calls. Our operating procedure is consistent with National Incident Management System for having control and coordination over incidents that create hazards for our responders. This person's managing the scene, we work on an incident management system, so they're there, is the incident commander primarily when they respond. In addition, uh, resources at Station Six, they would exceed the span of control for the current battalion chief for emergency and normal operating functions or supervision. Right now, the battalion chief's covering all the other five stations with the supervisors, as far as the captains and stuff that they supervise. So they're looking after all the people that day, essentially. Their captains have helped them, but, but they're responsible for everything, as well as on fires, assigning people to calls, you have multiple calls. We're, we're always on multiple calls. You have multiple calls, we're always on multiple calls, not always, but many times multiple calls. So that person can't handle all that, because they're calling all the shots on that. So that person would be, would be part of that, as far as the span of control, they would break that up, and essentially, we'd be splitting the city in half. The battalion chiefs are part of the overall effective response force. So they're a piece of the puzzle that goes in for that effective response force, the number of staff that we need. Essentially, I just went through, as far as the calls, I talked about the stations, and then wrote down each piece of apparatus and what they would be doing. And, you know, really, that's the, that's the needs that we have. So I don't know if you guys have any questions about that. I know we've been through this a few times and talked about, so I know you're familiar with it.
Well, the EMS, you have an EMS service out there able to come off ours, Dale?
Well, essentially, that's what you would think, and that could happen lots of times, but they're all over the place. So those guys at that station on, over there on Boone Station, they're gonna run a call in Elon, and they're gonna run a call in Alton Hall, I see, and, you know, they're just, that's just a base for them, so they're all over the place.
Do you have any EMS unit at Station Six?
Those guys would run, they would run medical calls just as all the other stations do now. So it would be the same, it would be the same process.
They're not making the larger ladder truck out of there?
I'm sorry?
They're not using that large ladder truck to go on EMT calls?
If we have to, we do. If we don't, if we don't have any other units available and there's a medical call, we don't, not respond.
It's not the first response vehicle out of that for EMT call?
It would not be the first response out of that station. But sometimes they do have to run, if, like downtown, if Engine One's on the call, then they're gonna cover in. We wanna be sure that we have someone to go, we're not gonna not go if we have people available.
Guys, if you are to call, at one point in time, there was a conversation about closing stations, and Station Two was identified, smaller area. Jay, you had a slide about an additional search and come to the number of calls. We went back and pulled up two.
This one?
Yeah. Okay, I think we'll do that if you would.
Okay. It's a little bit, a whole lot of lines in there, because we have the, we have the street layout in there. But what we're saying right now is that, essentially, here's, that's Sidney Avenue, I think. I'm trying to figure it out, all these lines, but what we're saying is, if we were to close Station Two, that was, that was an option, the things that we talked about, and we went back and reviewed that, and we have, as far as the recommendation, if you remember at that time, we didn't, we didn't think that that was a good thing to do. It was an option, if that's what happened, but it was not a good thing to do, based on our operations and all the things that I covered with you here. But we're saying that Station Two, that's not a good option to close, Station Two. And primarily, as we go back and look, Station Two's calls would have to be split up between somebody. Somebody's gotta go up there, they're no longer, so there'd be four hundred.
Web Avenue, you're right.
That's correct, Web Avenue. So there will be four hundred and fifty-seven additional calls for Station Five out here on Industry Drive. So as we split that district up, Five is gonna have to cover four hundred and fifty-four, that's, that's a primary response. You know, if they're available and something happens in that area, they're gonna pick up that many more calls. But what that does, when you do that, that's why I talked about, it's about the whole city. What that does is automatically four hundred and fifty-seven more times, that unit's gonna be unavailable for a call. If you have a call in the industrial area or anywhere that's their primary district now, which is these areas here, that's additional four hundred and fifty-seven times that they're not gonna be available. As well as Engine One or Station One, which is the busiest station that we have, they'll be picking up four hundred, five hundred and fourteen additional calls. Again, what that's doing is five hundred and fourteen more times that that truck would be unavailable for another call. And they run with each other, so they, they're going to help each other. If it's just a car fire, a medical call, we have one truck more. If we have a structured fire, an automatic alarm, a smoke detector, C-Lot Valley trucks, a smoke detector. Well, a smoke detector tells us there's smoke in a house. If we don't know any different, that's what we think it is, and we have to send a force to be ready to fight a structured fire, because we don't know any different, we change up if we get additional info. But that's what that does right there, you have to split that district up. And part of that district over here, it may be feasible for Station Three on Graham-Hope Del Road in Wilkins, for Three to come pick up some of this area right back over here. But essentially, they really can't get there faster than one can, so they're gonna be there. Now, if you have a structured fire here, and we talked about the two stations, Station One's gonna come, Station Three is gonna come. And then anything to the western part of, the eastern part of the city of those two units are on a call, whether it's an automatic alarm, a structured fire, the next thing to go to East Burlington is gonna be Station Five out on Industry Drive. They have to come all the way through town and go out to the east side. Or to go up to the north side, like for Glen Reagan, they're gonna have to cover all the way up to that area with Four coming from the mall over that way to help them as well. So it just creates holes if we do that.
Chief, based on what we've seen in the studies, what do we anticipate the cost per service count being at the new station?
Station, currently as we are, Station One is the, is the lead station, and Station Four is right behind them. I don't know that I have those numbers.
Station One ran, in twenty thirteen, Station One ran two thousand two hundred and eleven calls, and Station Four was right behind, they were our second-leading station with two thousand one hundred and sixty calls.
And Station Four is?
South Church Street.
I'm sorry.
So they're, they're really helping with Four, as far as knowing those, that number of calls, because Station Six would be primary to their district, okay? But also, the ladder truck itself would be covering the ladder truck calls. It's where we have them coming from Headquarters Station downtown now. So that station would be covering a general district, and then the ladder truck out there would be covering a larger, essentially, half the city.
When Station Six comes on board, how do you shift the responsibility, say for Four, for example? Which way does it go? Because obviously Four is coming, coming where Six is gonna go.
That's correct. You're saying how do we decide to?
Somewhere along the line, someone has to shift, or the territory changes, or the district changes.
Right.
So I guess my question would be, which way is it shipped?
That is generally on.
Again, the better question is, who's gonna get some relief?
Well, one's gonna, one's gonna get relief to start with because of the ladder truck situation.
Right.
The battalion chief's gonna get relief, because he's covering from down here, covering the whole city.
Right.
So you have that, and then what we do is, we just look, with Andrew helping us out through G I, G I S and our response districts, then we're gonna go in, we'll go in up here and cut part of this area out for Station Six, is what we would do. Now, the bigger part about relief is the coverage, the backend coverage, filling. So what I mean is, if we have a fire right here, then Station Six is going and Station Four is going. Right now, we have a fire right here, Station Four is going, but then Station One is coming all the way out here to help them, their backup. Or possibly Five, depending on where it's at.
Right.
So essentially, everybody gets relief in the process.
And another issue we ran in with Three guys is that if you come in south, or Three towards the interstate, we've got a, we've got a train track to cross.
Right, right on here.
That's, yeah, that's.
Right, and there's no way to know till you get there or something. Our units uptown work around that, to go under the underpass, just to be safe. Takes a little longer sometimes, but you never get caught. But that's a situation that you're not, that's what I'm saying, from here, with these guys trying to cover back into this area right here, it's just trying to split it up a little more, it's just not feasible to do that, actually.
I know we had some discussion about closing the station, and one that we parted, I guess, was Two. And you obviously have given us information, not saying that's not a good idea. But if you had to close one, and dollars were a factor, which one would it be? If you had to?
If you're telling me we have to, that's, that's the only option anywhere, would be that station, but.
And I'm not, I'm not in favor of closing the station.
I understand that.
But I just want.
Yeah, there is, there is no other option, if that's what your choice is. But, you know, we pretty much stayed it all along, and we didn't think that was a good thing.
Right, then I would support that, thank you. Any other questions for Chief Smith?
In reference to interstate incidents, which is, we tend to have on the larger incidents in terms of traffic issues. Of course, Five can go east, with Six out here, it can, it can take an awful lot of the west, and it can begin to split that up. And one might have to, a major interstate issue might have three states at the time to block that.
That's right, we normally have two anyway, but the problem is with the interstate, Four covers part of the interstate now, and Five covers part. The problem with Station Five is there's no access to interstate immediately. So they have to go Industry Drive all the way back to Maple Avenue if they're wanting to cover a section back to the west, or they got to go all the way down to Alamance Road, continue west, or come back east. So they have to go a long way around just to get to the interstate. It's where this one will have access, quicker access to the interstate.
We're, we're continuing to work on that Tucker Street, Jake, by the way.
That'd be awesome, that would be awesome, right?
How am I late?
Yeah, that'd be awesome for us.
Harold, startup, one-time cost on this would be what? Forget the construction work and all that, outside of that?
It's a, it's two trucks, and the capital would be the two trucks and the building. And we've got money reserved out of reserves to cover that.
So we're working on this project in this budget we're currently getting ready to go into?
Last year, we put, started back in operation, put it back five hundred thousand dollars towards a million dollars. This year, our goal was to add another two hundred, two fifty back. So when you get into the fifteen, sixteen operational year, when you open up, you're only looking at about a two hundred fifty thousand dollar increase to cover your entire operations going forward. In other words, money's been layered to try to prepare you to what would be a million dollar shot you want to hit.
Okay. Any other questions for Chief Smith?
Now, hiring, don't wanna get too far ahead of ourselves, but we, for the time we train, we'd probably have to start hiring late this coming fiscal year, and certainly have on board. Now, Eric's pretty aggressive on his plan, like in his thing, through twelve months, but this is probably maybe December one fifteen, before this thing opens. Time to get, get it built, get people in there and start operating.
All right, that's a good point, but okay, let's say we open December one fifteen. When do you have to have the fifteen people, the employee equipment, all that? So when do we have to have that in place to move forward, like December fifteen opening?
We would need a minimum, a minimum, like you'd be squeaking in on a year, but you're gonna need a year to have the apparatus ordered. So it's gonna take a year to get the apparatus there that you need. The training process is a twelve, is a twelve-week process, just from, from start to finish is a twelve-week process. Now, what we talked about is potentially staggering, or just doing the whole fifteen in one time. We don't know, we've never done fifteen, I've never done fifteen since I've been here. But, so we're trying to work out that process till we do the whole fifteen. But one thing that Harold talked to us about this, that I think was kind of a little odd and thing for him, is that when Station Six comes online, when we put people there, you flip a switch. Yesterday, you're running, there's no Station Six. Today, at eight o'clock in the morning, you flip a switch, and all the computer stuff works the new way, because you can't have it in between, there can't be dispatching calls for Six, and Six not there up and running. So that's all the, all those procedurals, computer-based stuff has to be done and worked out. It takes some time to do as well. So the truck, the father's out would be the trucks, as far as the year on the trucks, if you forget about the station part.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Hi, Harold.
Okay, Public Transportation. Mike has been visiting our other municipalities. Actually, it appears the next weekend and day, we're really key times above Mevin and Graham in terms of a potential decision to be made. As we indicated before, Gibsonville has committed, and the other two cities is at the council level. That's all I can tell you right now.
Hall River's a no.
Pardon me?
Hall River's a no.
Oh, yeah, Hall River's a no, yeah, we've been talking about Major, talking about Mevin, Graham, Burlington.
And Blair, Blair, go you tomorrow, right?
I'll let Mike tell you the dates that were posted. Elon is really in a kind of a holding pattern with a new manager. And I'll let Mike throw a little more detail about that, but I, I don't know, I don't, I don't, I don't think the pending decision is nearly as close on Elon as it is potentially on Mevin and Graham. So Mike's plan on this goes through where you are, the beach you've been to, and then kind of where we are as we go forward with the non.
Sure.
Thank you, Harold. As you know, I have been out talking to our partners, the community in the area, just to get a list of where we've been. Mentioned Gibsonville, the approval in January, they did that that night, at the same meeting, they had motion to approve that. I met with individual council members of Elon on January thirty to twenty-third. We got the notification from Hall River, they would not be able to find a position to be involved. Went to Graham's Board Retreat, gave a presentation on the twenty-fourth of February. I met individually with the mayor and new manager with Elon on February twenty-fourth. Went to the City Council on March third, which was the beginning of our ice and snow. That's why you're gonna see like a two-week delay, nothing really happened. A lot's at home, but not a lot for this presentation. Went and did a short radio call-in show with W B A G. Went back to Graham, they had a called public hearing at the council meeting specifically for transit. Let the public speak, I gave a little presentation. It is on their agenda tomorrow night, I'm going back to that meeting. They're gonna consider a vote or a discussion, but they've already had their public hearing. Mevin is having a public hearing on Thursday, I'll be back giving a presentation just for transit. It is on their agenda for the next council meeting, which is the seventh. I just spoke with Elon's staff, and we'll be attending that board retreat there on April tenth to give them a presentation together as a group. I'm not sure when it will be on their agenda, but that's the next step, it's a commission, they had a new manager, things like that. That's where I've been, with lots of questions, new questions, old questions. Just at the end, always ask them to, that's what they're intent, that's something that we'll be anticipating so we can go forward if we do.
Questions for Mike?
Mevin would have probably had an answer earlier, but the ice got them, I mean, it was council, I believe.
Yeah, the night I was there, I was speaking, about five minutes in, they just called it. It was that, that night that it started, we really didn't know it was gonna snow and ice as much as it did the first time. So we sort of got delayed that night, they were in action that night, they didn't, they didn't have time to go forward. So with the time available, they did call public, there's a special public meeting before they have a, kind of a council item to discuss it.
Let's do a hypothetical here, let's say everybody agreed to public transportation. From time everybody agreed till we send it out to a contract or whatever, to be it on contract, to be it on one-to-one service. What kind of timeframe would we look at from sending it out to actually getting it up and running a year, year and a half?
Definitely, definitely beyond twelve into the eighteen month range, to do everything we can do. The details to the, to the equipment, there's a lot to be done. You can hit some, speed up the schedule a little bit along the way, but that, that would be your timeframe.
Yeah, now, well, somebody says decline to come in. That sort of throws a wrench into it on where, do we just do for Burlington, or do we do for? into it on where, do we just do for Burlington? Or do we do for Burlington, uh, Gibsonville? Since those are the only two states right now to land. Do we bypass Elon?
That was, that was a question that came out both of Elon and, uh, Graham. And, and this time I answered yes. We would have to, we would either, if we had to go through, or unfortunately we would, but you wouldn't be able to stop, or we would look at other alternatives to route us in a different fashion. I mean, until others make decisions about how we're gonna do that. If you weren't gonna participate, we would have to.
Same question, would we go to ACC? Do we go to the county seat?
That was a question.
You know, if, if somebody, Graham was at the county seat, wanted to come to Burlington. You know, you say, no, you can't ride a, a, you pay, this is a two-dollar fare, you want to drive, maybe if they paid, if they paid a fare, then you don't return.
If they don't, if they don't join, they don't plot. It's real simple. You know, if Graham doesn't join, Graham's not gonna get stopped. Is that why?
Correct.
Now, if we could work out, if, if, let's say the city of Burlington agrees, and then we wanted to make a run to Community College in Burlington, then something would have to be worked out there. Not with Graham, but with Community College.
President Gaywood has been attending all the public meetings now. Um, he's, which came from Urban Area Department, he's a, a part of this, you know, Graham, and I think he's had an meeting, they've had a meeting also.
And I think it's great that he would show up for public support and all that, that they need to think about bringing some money to the table, if they're willing, something like that to be, uh, from Burlington to, so the community college, I would think. Some type of conversation about dollars. Any other questions for Mike? Thank you, Mike.
Last item, uh, did the monthly staff report with the department, and part of Amy's report tonight will also include a discussion about, uh, efforts with, uh, front porches. She might even talk about signs too, unless she or she'll, I'm sure we somehow feed it in there. So, Amy?
Great. Nice images of our staff. Um, we were unable to get photos of three people, but that's when you see all the people who are working on all of our projects. These are our divisions in planning and our areas of responsibility. You can see that, um, we touched on quite a few areas, community development, minimum housing, historic preservation, zoning, plan review, zoning enforcement, code enforcement, economic development, subdivision administration, G I S, census, long-range planning, and transportation planning of the M D S. The first thing we're gonna look at is minimum housing. We have a screenshot of an online C B C program form that people can fill out online. And here's an example of a problem that we're reporting of a, a rotting porch. Sometimes the minimum housing commission gets involved, but you can see, um, the end result here is very nice. Code enforcement, um, again, C B C programs, people call in, our guys respond, they go out, flag the log or high brass or whatever the issue is, and then there it is, all cleaned up. Code enforcement here, this is one of our, um, newest efforts enforcing, um, porches as far as having extra items on the porch that are not, uh, porch or outdoor furniture. You can see this house has to fly here. Here are two shots of a house for before, and here is the after. We've had, uh, for the Starlets Program thirty-eight, um, reported cases, a hundred percent compliance. We even had, um, one of the owners of multiple rental units to send out letters, copies of our letters, to all of his tenants, whether they had a problem or not. And they were calling in, asking why they were getting letters. I haven't done anything wrong, but it was just an awareness issue that he wanted to step ahead of any problems. Zoning, um, some of the things you usually see from us are text amendments, food trucks, portable storage units, you see rezoning cases. Some of the things you not, may not be familiar with, we issue zoning certification letters, we work with customers on land development issues, uh, plan and plat reviews, sign permits, work with the Planning and Zoning Commission, board adjustment, and rarely, uh, court cases. Zoning enforcement, again, our C B C program, they use the phone, contact our guys, they head out. In this case, it's a junk car, and it's all gone. We've had perfect compliance with that program as well, and have not had to tow a car yet. Other issues there is zoning enforcement, one of those is illegal signage. Um, we have picked up over twenty-three hundred signs since we've had that increased enforcement effort. Um, we also handle landscape and fencing inspection and two for storage complaints. We have a plan review. Um, here is, um, Macintosh on the lake. Um, it's pre-construction. Here's, um, their plan, and then here's the entry nicely built out. Um, people bring in their plans to us, we review them in T R C. Uh, we've got multiple departments across the city that are represented at this table, including, uh, N C D O T. And here is a shot that Daniel Schaffner of our staff took from an airplane of Alamance crossing before it came, Alamance crossing here. And then here it is open for business and bringing in tax authors. We handle historic preservation. This is a map of the Beverly Hills district, and here are a couple of historic homes that are here in Burlington that are very beautiful. The Burlington Graham M P O transportation planning is handled through us as well. Um, Mike and Phil handle it. They, uh, have put up this nice map in assistance with Andrew, um, of our G I S, and it's a nice pipe map of the area. Here is our pedestrian master plan that was adopted in twenty-twelve, and here is a plan for road widening. They handle other issues in addition to this, but these are some of the main things that they do. Community development, here's again the before and the after, and then proudly here are some of the nice projects that we've had as a result of our efforts in, uh, community development. Now, we assist other departments in various ways, but we're just gonna look at G I S mapping here. Here's one that you're probably familiar with, uh, it's our new collection map, probably seen that around. And frequently, with our prior discussions, looking at emergency evacuation. Here's the snow this year that paralyzed I forty. Here's the vehicle fire. This side of I forty is definitely paralyzed. Got Amtrak going through here, got, uh, our park here with lots of people right in the heart of the city. Here's what G I S has made. It's an evacuation map for the fire department to respond to. We have a quarter mile evacuation zone, half mile, and one mile. They've also done that for the railroad and for city park. And those are critical life issues that, uh, G I S is helping the fire department with. Long-range planning, we're planning for the future. That's one thing that, uh, most planners do, you've got to look ahead as far as you can into the future and try to figure out what's coming so that you can stay ahead of, uh, the trends. One of the things here, does see new census. Here are a couple of maps that have been made, um, with the data from the twenty-ten census. The census determines the federal money that we get. It can be between several hundred and several thousand dollars per person. That's why the places I work, I've always been, have really been pushed to try to get people to respond to the census because it's extremely important and brings in a lot of money for our city. Um, twenty-ten, uh, twenty-ten is rapidly approaching, it's gonna be here before we know it. Um, the local update of addressing program is gonna start probably about twenty-seventeen. The training sessions will begin about twenty-sixteen for that, so just we're in twenty-fourteen, it's very close. Here's our original city limits, and there's the current city limits. The future, who knows? Um, we've got a couple of facts here for you, um, well, not facts, in fact, but they're predictions, um, pretty close to being factual with this one. About twenty percent of the four, the population nationwide in twenty-four is gonna be over sixty-five. That's something we need to think about. Um, there's all kinds of issues related to transportation as far as even people who are older being able to read a street sign from a certain distance in their cars that have to be thought about, um, lighting, things of that nature. Um, housing demand, there's predictions that we're going to shift to more rental usage, um, about fifty percent of the population. Looking at, um, smaller homes, on smaller lots, attached homes, as far as what people are gonna want for, uh, dwellings. And as far as, um, population goes, that's gonna come in just a second. We've got to look at our twenty-twenty, uh, twenty-thirty-five comprehensive plan that we're working on. And you can see various, um, departments in the city and various areas that are touched on in our plan that has gotten underway. We're gonna have that first public meeting in May. Now, here's our population slide. Twenty-ten is accurate. The rest of them are, um, population projections that I've made, uh, using just a very conservative growth rate. And I really don't like using a conservative growth rate because there's so much that can happen. Um, for example, in Pittsburgh, uh, developers come in and has bought seventy-five hundred acres and wants to develop it with shops and a lot of housing. Pittsburgh right now has about four thousand people, and they're planning to add sixty thousand people through that development. So, like in two thousand, nobody really saw a Macintosh on the lake coming. So something like that that's happening in Pittsburgh could easily happen here. There's plenty of land around. So that's just something to keep in mind when you look at, at something like this. It's not always accurate, and you never know what we're gonna end up with. Top ten most populous states, uh, I've got our figures down here, the twenty, twenty, excuse me, two thousand census, twenty-ten census, and then projections that are, I think, very accurate, um, for our growth. If you look at, at the states here, in twenty, in two thousand, we were not in the top ten. In twenty-ten, we broke in to number ten. The next two census years, we are gonna be projected to be number nine, and then twenty-fourty, we're gonna be number eight. There's a lot of people moving to the state for retirement, for work, going to school. Um, so we're just continuing to increase, and we have to look to that in the future for our population projections and, um, try and plan out where everything, including fire stations are gonna go. The U S is, uh, developing into what's called, um, mega regions, and an individual region is, uh, referred to as a megalopolis. We're growing beyond simple city boundaries. People are going to live a more urban lifestyle, and so cities are starting to grow together, and you need to look with a regional view to the future. This is a satellite photo of the earth at night, and you can see several regions of really bright lights here in the U S. You can see them over in Europe. Japan's pretty much just one bright light. And you can see with the satellite view, it's easier to see the mega regions. This one is ours. If I can hold steady enough, this is Raleigh, Durham. Here's Greensboro, Mississippi. This bright light right here in the middle, that's us. So we show up.
My kids don't turn any lights on. You got power bill reasons.
We show up on the satellite photos. And you can see, you can see the roadway connections, the highways.
It's planned on business in U P.
Now, that region that we are a part of here is, they've all got different names because this is a new thing in planning, um, but it's called the Piedmont Atlantic region in most cases. And that region is home to, give or take, around twenty million people, um, stretches over to Birmingham, Alabama, and through Atlanta. And as far as the economy goes, it has, um, a place in the top fifteen economic regions in the world. So that's very impressive, and something to keep in mind for the future. And we're trying to work on economic development in our department. Um, we've established an economic development team. We have our first brochure, starting business in Burlington. It's not completely perfect, but it's something. And I've got copies of it here to give to you. Um, we have the first couple pages of our economic development booklet that we're gonna be passing out, um, when I'm writing recruitment letters, which I've already started doing, making contact with various businesses to try to encourage them to locate here. Um, we're gonna have a resource guide, um, economic development plan is a very large and intensive publication, but we're gonna try to do that in-house. Um, marketing and economic development analysis, we're gonna have a targeted advertising campaign that we've already done a lot of research on. Um, I've got some ideas for where I want us to start, um, working on that. We have a new website for economic development, um, target industries, which will help us with our advertising campaign, have annual reports, and, um, eventually we're gonna get into tourism promotion because that's extremely important, can be, bring in lots of people, especially with our wonderful recreation and parks department. We have so much going on there that will bring in so much money. I was at a conference last year and learned a lot about that, and it can just bring in tremendous amounts of revenue for the city. And my presentation.
Questions for Ms. Melton? Thank you, Ms. Melton. Cheryl?
Questions about evening tonight or evening, the agenda tomorrow? Uh, a brief update, the, uh, position of reclassification study is, has been given to the staff. Uh, I asked Matt if he'd come, uh, tonight, he was out of town, well, she's tomorrow night, but he will be, uh, appearing for council on April fifteenth. Put that forward. Um, we will also, uh, uh, in May, we're probably gonna talk at fifteen about, uh, a day for the budget workshop in May, uh, we're meeting with departments, uh, again this week. Uh, I do know in the May, uh, May work session, animal services, uh, we'd like to attend and start laying out some, some changes, kind of later, we hired there, this, uh, has some objections for us, uh, in terms of, of a couple, if you have one, actually, on the agenda tomorrow night about having additional discount, uh, weekends for adoptions. But also, I think she's gonna be providing information, uh, on the tethering issue that brought up to a number of you all, and she was involved in Orange County when they, and basically they had that program, eighteen-month program, uh, to get that in and how, how it potentially could work. So she'll be here, uh, in, in May. Um, any other questions?
Cheryl?
Harold, just like what I, we're close to, um, finishing up the work on our charter implementation. Your office is trying to put a proposal to, to give the hookers finished. It'd be nice if we could get that on the left, left of the issue, take that off the table. It's there for you, it's a redlined copy, change were being made, clean copy, if you get some minor revisions, it's, it's, it's just complete. If we, uh, can review it now in the second meeting this month, we can put it in the short session if you get that out of the, uh, I'd like to do it.
Will you be presenting that?
Sure.
Will you be presenting that second?
Yes. But I put it in your box.
Sure.
You want us, we bring it to us, we've got a type of look at it, and the council adopted, do you present it to the gentleman, say yes?
Also, uh, the Nolan, the brief update, uh, as of this afternoon, we have picked up fifty thousand cubic yards, just under fifty thousand cubic yards, it was a brush, under two weeks, the first pass, we originally did projection of it, sixty thousand. We were a little wrong, some of them were wrong on that one. We put that out.
Well, I keep, I keep putting more out, that's probably why.
Federal decorations made today, good use of all of us. We got a week and a half left in the first pass. You know, I think Eric gets the mill way in, and, and they meant like this afternoon, and now they maybe projecting a minute, as much as a hundred thousand cubic yards. So, this thing will probably extend beyond the six weeks we talked about. It's gonna take longer than that, uh, so, uh, we will be working with the public and letting people know. The public's been really good in, in, uh, Asian, uh, some, some area really active with our guys. So, you know, you've got to end on that. Those guys are going seven days a week now, I don't know. Do they have, I know we did broken by zones, do they have operators in each zone?
Yeah. Anything else, guys?
Mayor and council members, at the last work session, we talked about the hours of waiting, having a work session start at six. And when I had made the motion to do that, I was under the impression of we're gonna keep it at five o'clock like we did the last couple of work sessions. So, uh, my question to you guys is, I like, the mayor, the movement back to the early hours, consider the six o'clock, seven hours.
What about four?
Where's the minute?
About seven, eight.
Our, our, our six.
Yeah. Good morning, I'm up.
Can you tell me the question?
Is this still at seven, eight, get that one? I have no mind.
Yeah. So, the mayor, if, if, back to my...
It's up to you guys, what do you wanna do? Uh, I, I think what Silo said was, uh, he misunderstood the way I stated it. And, uh, what he said to you tonight is, he'd like to bring it back up. So, the question is, would you guys like to start these work sessions at five o'clock as opposed to six or six fifteen for food, then seven o'clock the meeting? That's the question.
The question is, we come into five, go to work, then take a break, come back, finish up.
That's right.
That's good for me. Yeah?
Five o'clock, for your own guys, thank you.
Good night, man.